So we are called to order at 7:03 PM. Janie in Bonnie's absence, can you take the minutes?
Yes, I already told Bonnie I would do that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Hello Jenny. Hello Melissa.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, everybody.
Okay, so our first item up is any changes to the agenda this evening, I would like to add one item under new business, which would be a discussion of something to do in lieu of the staff holiday party that we were not able to have this year due to COVID.
Sorry, what?
Somebody say something.
What Eric? I didn't get that.
Of something to do for staff in lieu of the annual party. There's usually the annual holiday party that
Take my stand.
All together. The holiday luncheon. But packing fifteen staff and seven trustees, plus an indeterminate number of friends altogether into the spruce room did not seem like the best of plans amidst the Omicron surge. And when the cases started getting really high, even our socially distanced pizza gathering ideas seemed like it probably wasn't going to be quite necessarily distant enough, so. So Kathy and I had talked and I've got some follow up on that.
Great.
So any other items of business to add to the agenda this evening, otherwise we'll move on to minutes or no, not minutes. Communication with the public. Okay. Our members of the public that are present are Eliza, Martha, Melissa and Katie. Do you have anything that you would like to? Would you like to address the board this evening?
I have nothing to say. Neither do I.
Nothing, thank you.
Eliza, I really like that Illinois map. It is a nice map.
Thank you. It's an X school map. Lacy, you know I love maps.
Yes, maps are wonderful. I can, I can say, I can thank Kathy.
Have you ever, Kathy, have you ever been to the library? Down in the Gold Coast?
Newbury.
Newbury Library, yeah. Their cartography collection is incredible.
Yeah, I've not been.
It's wonderful there, yeah.
That's good to add to my list, thank you.
Yeah. I love visiting libraries. Sorry.
No, no problem. Okay, so that does take us then on to minutes and I will switch over here to screen. Sharing here so that I can get those up on the screen and these are the minutes. Board. Okay, so any questions, comments or corrections on the minutes, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve.
I do have a comment. It kind of jumped out at me when I was reading them over that I am listed as the, the under committee reports did not meet. You can scroll down, Eric. It's a fairly minor thing, but I'm listed as chairman of
Are you still listed as the? Yep, 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 you're listed there and that should be Jenny.
Yeah, HR should be Jenny, right?
Yep.
And what about community engagement, am I? Okay, and then am I chair of community and engagement also?
I can go back and double check, I think so.
What it says on the
That one hasn't been met since June.
Jenny again, so. If you look, if you look down on your agenda for tonight's meeting, it's listed as Jenny, the chair and me, the member.
Well, let's see here. I did make a point of going through and updating that list, so we should probably go with the agenda.
Okay. All right. So just those two changes to
My first disconnection of the evening, okay. So those need to be amended.
So with that in mind, I would move to approve as amended.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So did you guys hear me say any, all in, all in favor?
No.
And I, I just missed hearing everybody say aye.
Oh, aye.
Okay, I wasn't sure which, I wasn't sure whether it was me that got cut off saying it or then I got cut off and didn't hear it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You did? Okay. Any opposed? Internet connection. On back, okay. Um, moving on, it's something that was trying to play. I think it was maybe slowing down my internet. Okay. There we go. Moving on, next item up is finance reports. There we go. Okay, and we're to the, the version that I had sent out earlier, as I mentioned in that email. Have been thing, after, after everything's approved, then it has to go through the accountants at Lauderbach that the village contracts with and they handle making sure that everything gets journalized so that it actually ends up applied to the appropriate lines. And if they don't finish that, then things don't show up, was my understanding, we were done, but then there was a whole bunch more stuff when I ran the same reports here. Just this afternoon, so.
What happened to Sickich? Isn't this supposed to be Sickich?
So. The village still contracts with, with Sickich and Sickich provides auditing services. What Lauderbach provides is day to day accounting services. So they, rather than bring in another full time accountant to replace Marlene when she retired, they contracted with Lauderbach.
Gotcha, gotcha.
To provide
Call if I'm on and brush your teeth, okay?
To provide the additional service, so there are two firms that they contract with and actually one of the, what are the notes from the village board meeting this past Monday was that they re-upped with a lot with Sickich for auditing services. So.
Eric, this is, this is something new then that Lauderbach is doing that, is, is that Lauderbach like up in Door County, Lauderbach, L A U T E R B A C H?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
There's another remember the other name. It's Lauderbach and Amen.
Want to spell that?
A M E N.
Okay.
Just like amen. Their logo is a blue background with the white LA on it. So there, there's not that many, there's not that many big accounting firms still operating in the Chicago area, I gather, so they didn't actually have a lot of responses besides Sickich. Sounds like for the, for the village in terms of audit, but that I think answers the question, let's jump back to finance reports here. Close my document, okay. We're up to a bang, we are off to a bang upstart here. Okay. Okay, so here's the, the updated report, I can see that particularly on the revenue page that some of the numbers are very obviously different than the one that went out in the packet. So to just go quickly through for a report here, the $3,837 in passport revenue last month from our busiest month to date in terms of passport applications processed. So that's very exciting, we are in the month of February now already over $15,000 in revenue for the fiscal year. So that continues to be going well, very well. Two other items on the, on the page here. One, we seem to have, if you spotted it, a accounting error that cropped up in our license renewals, that there was something that was applied more than it should have been. Hence the negative number and I will be getting that fixed. And then the noticeable spike in the miscellaneous income, so about $2,500 of that is related to reimbursement to the library from the foundation for the development coordinator salary. The, the rest of it is actually reimbursement of a different sort. So one of the things that is open as an option to staff members when they retire from municipalities or municipal entities in the state of Illinois is that they can continue to get insurance on the same plan and through the municipality, they just need to set up a, a way to pay for that because the employer will no longer be covering that cost. So, but they can still opt in as, as part of the group plan. Basically, which does represent a savings because you're part of this big group rather than trying to go it on your own, so we've had someone that's opted in. In short, and then this is our first chunk of reimbursement funds that we're receiving as part of that process and will likely continue to see that going forward as a result.
We, Eric, do we see an offset then in the expenditures then that, that we're paying in, in our medical bill? For that person that is offsetting here?
So it is an additional expense that shows up in expenditures and then additional revenue that shows up in revenues.
Alright.
Which is how the auditors like to see it.
Yep.
Okay. And then scrolling down here. Other professional services. The payments this month include $1,000 is the first payment for services rendered to Engberg Anderson for design and architectural services. And also a bevy of projects that we had done with our, our website. As we were caught up in the transition from one service provider to another, we've kind of built up a backlog of things that needed to be worked on over the late summer and into the fall. And we were also very much due for an upgrade to the next version of Drupal. So most all of that stuff has been done now, I understand from Martha that we're not expecting any big projects here. Or really much at all in the way of projects for a bit after the end of February. So that is some of the story behind that number. And last number that I'll draw attention to here before hopping down to the bottom line is the adult reference and he reference. This represents annual subscription for a couple databases. One of those is Mango, which is a language learning database. The other of them, blanking, so I'm looking at my notes. Mango and US Major Dailies, which is going to provide this, not just with the subscription to the, the local Chicago Tribune, but also to make available major papers from other places around the country as well, so that is very exciting. And that line also does, as part of that expense this month include regular payments that we make to Hoopla and Canopy, which are more typically show up there every month. So, okay, looking at the bottom line. Which went all the way to the bottom and I won't let me go back, there we go. You can see that we are at 76% expended as, as far as percentage of the budget used and we received 97.95% of the revenue expected. So, still waiting on some of the last of the property tax funds, we do also have some significant outstanding chunks that we'll receive yet. Probably the most notable of those is the end of the year payment that we'll be receiving from the, the village as part of their commitment in the intergovernmental agreement that should come out to about somewhere around $9,500. So all in all, we continue to be right where I would expect and want us to be in terms of approaching the end of the fiscal year. So any questions on the financial reports? If not, I would look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, motion from Zaudi, second from Hayes, financial documents, so we will do a roll call vote. Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
And trustee Zaudi.
Aye.
Financial reports are approved. And that is going to take us over then to checks. These stayed the same. Which is why I say that this was a journal issue. Rather than an issue of getting everything into the system. Okay. So a couple to draw attention to in the, the check report. First one I'm going to draw attention to here is the always a bit unusual when we're making significant payments to other libraries in the area more common of late and like a lot of the items that have been up lately, this has to do with cooperation specifically around a program and speaker, Madeline Miller, who is an author and a number of libraries in the area that went in together on, on a virtual program with her. So that's what that represents is our share of the you know, charge toward that, author speaking fees are often, as Jillian and I have found out in assisting with Read Between the Rings, quite expensive. You know, often on the low end, at least many, many thousands of dollars. Going up into the range of tens of thousands, so this is definitely in terms of author speaking opportunities, a great opportunity, this increased collaboration that we have an opportunity to be able to offer programs like this to our community by working with our neighbors. So that is that program moving on down. I'd mentioned the first initial payment to Engberg Anderson. And I wanted to mention the payment to the driver's license guide that we purchased for office supplies. That actually is an annual purchase and it's a little book that we hand for part of the passport process. In case someone comes in with an out of state ID that we have it handy so that we can be confident and comfortable that we're looking at something that genuine article rather than somebody attempting to pass something off. That's just a shodley made knockoff, but it's out of state, so you don't know what a Virginia state license looks like, do you? Of course not, so it should be just fine. So that's one we always keep on hand. And
Got your Hawaii driver's license, right, McLovin?
Yeah, yeah.
I think that covers most of the ones, draw attention to, I mentioned the net to community. Ravinia Plumbing was out, that was to fix a fixture. A fill valve attached to one of the toilets on the main floor, which were greatly, we're very excited not to have that leaking anymore. Before it was leaking, it was scraping, screaming. Like some some poor creature was trapped inside it. And then it stopped screaming after a part was replaced and it was just leaking, but now it's completely fixed and that's amazing.
Always supposed to have a shrieking toilet.
Yeah. It was suggested to me by staff at one point that I might consider taping it so that I could forward the, the noise to, to the plumbing company. So that really covers everything I think that I've got here in terms of the checks as far as things I wanted to draw attention to. Any questions that anyone has?
More from my own identification, Eric, what was the, on the page above, the temporary use of funds to Clarence, it was like 295?
Clarence Didman?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head, but.
I do. Program that was out of the funds from the friends.
Got it.
Thank you.
I've also got on my other computer over here the the SMA.
Plus, we have such knowledgeable staff that there's no need. Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right, not hearing any other questions, I would look for a motion to approve.
All motion. Sorry, Kevin.
No, that's it, I'll second.
Motion from Zaudi, second from Kathy. And we will do again a roll call vote. Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman. John?
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Zaudi.
Aye.
All right, checks are approved and that is going to take us up to our committee reports and we had quite a few committees that met this past month. We had meetings of the building and grounds campaign, finance, human resources, long range plan. And I am aware that the technology committee has been active despite not having a scheduled meeting the past month. So starting at the top, building and grounds, Janie, would you like to give a quick report?
Sure, we've been meeting quite a bit also since February and mostly it's about the Stroh Reading Room, which is basically behind schedule and way over budget, so we've been playing with, with that. We have decided on some finishes and paint schemes, we're still in the process of doing that and obviously looking for ways to to cut back on the construction budget. Including the possibility of going to a used office furniture consolidator because there's offices closing like crazy and using something like that to, to put furnishings in, which will, you know, there's a lot of different things that we are considering doing to help with the bottom line on the budget. So that's still ongoing, um, then. I did have a couple of things I, I was wondering about with the parking lot. Eric, have we put up either car stickers or a sign? Have we given car stickers to employees?
Yes.
Okay.
Stickers, stickers were created, Anna pulled those together, they look very nice. Those were created and distributed for staff, we do have some additional signage that we put up in the back lot behind the library.
Okay.
Those include marking it as clearly as we can as staff parking and we are still, still considering, but did not get in before the the ground froze. A sign that would state a little bit more clearly that we don't want people cutting through. So we've, we've got the, we've got a staff parking sign up, but it's not the most visible. And a no cut through sign probably wouldn't go on this either, so a lot been done, lots still to do.
Yeah. Okay, that's great, and then that's really about it, the only other thing that was a question for me, Eric, was I know that at some point I, in the last month or so, I've seen an, an assessment of facilities, but I was looking through my materials. You gave it out to us at, at some committee meeting and I was just wondering
Yeah.
About where, where it was that I saw that, so I can try and find it again, or maybe ask you to send it to me again.
I had emailed it out along with the documents. Want to say it might have been last I think it might, I think it was last week's building and grounds committee meeting. I can find that, Janie.
Yeah, I knew I had seen it very recently, so yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
Okay. All right, and that is, uh that's about all I have, oh, I guess the only other thing, this is something else, I, a lot of stuff has been A lot of stuff has been. Coming through my inbox recently. And I was wondering about the the computer carols that we were gifted from another library. And where where we're putting those.
Those are in place at the old entrance. There there had been a little seating nook there with with two chairs. That we kind of created on the fly after the renovation.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we needed to consider in terms of staging. Was that we've still got two two desktop computers in the adult computer room. And. We would like to keep at least one of the two going. It's nice to have one that's permanently set up. Because then you can have a station set up with scanners and other. You know, things, you know, set up and ready to go for people. And. We. We being Martha saw on rails, they're reaching across the library system website. That Palatine Public Library had posted that they were looking to divest themselves of the the carols and they were free if you would come and pick them up. So we measured the notes, took a look at whether they would fit in the space, determined that they would. Jillian drove out to Palatine, picked them up and. Moved a few things around in the space and Liza and I muscled the last of the the second of the two into place here this afternoon, so. We're actually very. Very happy to see that as soon as we had those there. People started sitting down and using them.
Well done you.
Definitely interest in in having more of the laptop space to be used around the facility, so.
That's great.
They look nice. So they're in they're in good shape. We wouldn't brought them home if they weren't.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, that's all I have.
I really like your idea of using an office space consolidator to see if or an office furniture consolidator to see if you can find items. You know, the office occupancy rates across in the biggest metros are like under 30%. So there's got, like you said, there's got to be a lot of stuff out there, like Rob is, where is it and is it what you want, right?
Well, actually, Matt, I have to give credit where credit's due. Bonnie was the one who came up with that idea and. The interior designer who was working. For us a little bit with Engberg Anderson said, oh, yeah, I know about those and she gave us the name and location of two of them, so. You know, a field trip is in order.
Well, and that's what I wondered, one other idea I had, just just kind of brainstorming here. Are any of these like local consignment shops of interest like Renee Baldwin, who lives right down the road from the library? Runs that big one out on 176 across from the mobile and then Barrett Davy's wife Sam. Runs that one off of 43 by by North Shore Emergent Care. And I was just anecdotally, I was at Sam's last week. She has a ton of nice furniture. I even took home a few things, so. Yeah, maybe I again, it's, you know, we'd have to take what's available and if it even fits, but maybe maybe that's another option. Food for thought.
You know, Matt, I know about upscale resale, but I don't know about the other one. What what is that one?
Yeah, something treasures and Barrett and Sam Sam Davy owns it. Barrett was, I think he's in Lake Forest. He was running for office recently. So they're local folks and maybe they, you know, be more receptive to working with us.
And where are they located?
It's right off of, if you go south on 43 from 176, there's the the Ferrari dealership and then the next exit entrance. On the east side of 43, there's like a north, there's a pet, a vet veterinary hospital there. They're back. Where that road sort of starts to head head south and that office park back there. It's like hidden treasures or something treasure, something like that. I'll get I'll follow up with the actual name.
I can look it up, but thank you. I that's it. That's a new one.
Yep, so Sam Davy. Davy's owns that and you know, they're they she and her husband have lived here. Gosh, she was a classmate of my wife's in high school.
Those are great ideas. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Okay. So that takes us up to campaign planning committee. Kathy, you're our. Chair for the ad hoc.
Right. And to Matt and Janie's and Bonnie's point, I think repurposing and. You know, recycling, I think that's the the buzzword and great philosophy, so the more we can do. The benefit of the library of things fit in and we go out and measure and we got transportation to do use that as much as possible, plus it. It saves money, so I think that's great and local businesses and giving them an opportunity to make a contribution to us is a is a good idea as well, so that's thank you. So our committee is continuing to meet. I wanted to point out something because a little confusion surfaced that. That the this committee is an ad hoc committee was created so that a few trustees could could work together with staff members and so forth. Without having any violation of open meetings. And that's all it's really a kind of an assistance. Committee, it is not policymaking, so. There was some confusion that it was on a par with the friends and the foundation this and then that's not the case. It it an ad hoc committee can be called by the president when the need arises and then when. He doesn't arise, it just goes away, so that's what we're doing. We're just trying to help facilitate this whole process that we're involved in. With renovation and so on and so forth. One of the main things we're doing is discussing. A merger. A formal collaboration really of the friends and the foundation. For the purposes of more efficient fundraising, the. We found that the 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 two support. 501(c)(3) is both and start with F. It's confusing to people. The friends have a higher visibility. They've been around more. So there's some confusion as to people, which should they contribute to and how will those funds be managed? The reality is that people want to help the library and we all want to help the library, so we want to try to clarify that as much as possible, so. We, thanks to. Talk about collaboration, Melissa, Janie, Julian and Martha really worked hard to put thoughts together to come up with a. A case study based, John made the suggestion as well to approach the friends and see if we can consolidate the two organizations. It'll take a lot of work and organization, but we've got Melissa and. Jillian are worth helping, willing to help on that project and. We've got a good plan if we. Have the, you know, the agreement of the friends, so so that's kind of in the works. We're about to. Sit down and chat with them, we hope and and see where that goes, so we'll keep you posted on that. And then that would obviously frame. The future of fundraising for the library. Would it be one organization or would two have to be maintained and how do we approach that? Respectfully to one another, but again, always to the benefit of the library. Let's see. I think that's pretty much it. Melissa is. Working on that and she's also going to spend some time. For some of her spare time on inquiring about the state grant that we we all know we are beneficiaries of, but we have not seen any funds for. And we thought that perhaps having someone who really could make the follow up on the phone calls a little bit more often. Get to know a key person in Senator Morris's office, just kind of facilitate the process, so we we are right up there when the funds are available. And also. There's a. You know, it's the long history of the library and like, but there's a vacant building across the street. It's been vacant for quite some time. Everybody always wants to know what the story is with that, so Melissa's going to see if she can dig into that a little bit more and get some. It's it's time for feedback. We inquired into that a few years ago, but it's just time to find out what the story is and. You know, see if there's any opportunities there, but also to answer the question, all of you, I'm sure, good approach by people in the community. But why doesn't the library just grab the property across the street? So she's going to look into that for us.
Wasn't supposed to be a restaurant at one.
That kind of died.
That COVID, COVID casual.
Actually before COVID, it was it was going to be held owned by 400 members of the community, which I thought was a little. Optimistic to get them to agree on the menu and so forth, but. Didn't come to be. Anyway, I think that's pretty much where we are. We're continuing to meet our our big push right now is to sit down and meet with the friends and. See, we can work out with them.
Kathy, is there a a. Plan to meet the friends anytime in the near future? Do we have a date or is?
No, we are, I I'm actually going to contact. And this is actually kind of. We're getting a little ahead of ourselves, so just kind of keep it under your hats, but our goal is to reach out to the executive committee of the of the friends and meet with them. Before spring break would be the goal. The full organization gets together in April, so we'd like to. Explain how we think we can make two good organizations even better together and. That we would hope the conversation would start in March soon and. We hope that, you know, it can be go well and go on from there, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Melissa, do you want to add or anything to that? Is she there?
Yeah.
Hi, guys. Sorry, I was having some technical difficulty. Thanks, Kathy. I think you said it all. I don't know if there are any questions that we can field right now, but I think you covered it very well.
Anybody? Okay, thanks, Melissa, Eric.
Thank you, Kathy.
All right, so that is our. Campaign committee reports, finance committee, Bill, you are the chair.
Yeah. We've met. To go over the budget and. We've got a revised budget that I think is on the agenda in either the next or the second next item, Eric, to. To review with the board, so. Unless you want to go through it now, I'll just wait till we. Hit it on the agenda, I don't.
Well, we'll hit it on the agenda.
Yeah. So.
Okay. So, and I think probably a similar story for for HR. Which is next committee up and Jenny, that would be you. And we've got the director's annual review on new business as well.
Oh, okay, so I'll talk then. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a question.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Great.
Yes, yes. Okay, and then that is going to take us to the long range planning committee. John, you're the chair of the long range planning committee.
Sorry. Yeah, we met on the 31st. Couple of things, we went through the. Kind of did some some fine tuning on the the survey. And the. Survey supposed to be every two years, but we didn't do it the last time, so it's been four, it'll be four years since the last survey, so. That's going to go out. June 1st and be. Be out for three months, closing on August 31st. Based on what we find there, we will take a look at the. Maybe draft a new strategic plan and incorporating results of the survey into a new long range plan. In the fall. I think that's about the last time this we had about 250 to 280 responses. Over the three month period, so we're thinking expecting maybe we'll have the same kind of response. This time, so. Maybe that's it. Am I missing something?
No, I think you covered everything. Those were the two big items. Worked on the survey. And took a look at possible timeline for when we wanted to get done the next long range plan.
Yeah.
John, can I ask you something?
Sure.
How do, how can people access the survey?
Um, I'll defer to. Martha.
Uh, yeah, so it'll be online on the website and we usually have paper copies available at the desk for. For people who are more comfortable with paper or prefer paper. But main vehicle is online through a web form.
Do they, do we like have a database or anything that we sent it out to?
Um, we have the the program that we'll use, LibWizard, has like. Some analytics built into it, so we'll be able to generate graphs and some other. Comparative data from that. And then we also do our own analysis of the data as well.
I'm sorry, I meant to ask, like, do we send it out to library users or how like?
Oh. Or did?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
So.
Database that you send it to?
Yeah, we'll send it to, it'll be in our e-newsletter. It'll be in the newsletter. There will be some sort of. Activity in the summer reading club. If so, like to complete the survey to. Get a point or something and then we promote it at the desk as well.
Oh, that's great.
Plus, Glen and Villachal has been a very good egg and has been including our survey requests in the the village e-newsletter as well.
That's wonderful.
Is there any way we can send it automatically back to everyone who participated in the past?
Um. I don't know.
Not really.
Four years back and some of those might be extremely former members of the community at this point, too.
It's also anonymous. So it would be tricky to. To accomplish that.
So we didn't gather that.
The identity of the respondents.
So we didn't gather the emails, so Martha.
Yeah.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
The only things I would I would add, John, just as I was the the scribe for this meeting, so I've got detailed notes is. So in the past, the survey has kind of been a little. I guess squishy in terms of how long or the the long range plan in terms of what long is, so. It had been five, the most recent one was four. We decided that this long range plan would be three years. And that we would incorporate the, you know, the feedback, as John mentioned, from the survey into writing that plan. That we'd also in the survey get some more demographic information that might help us in some of our decisioning. Especially about the new members of the community and just changing face of the community. And then the last thing was we envisioned having this long range plan bifurcated into more tactical steps as well as like three year vision. Because it was trying to be, I think, all things previously.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
And we're the target Kathy and everyone else for your benefit is to have the survey completed by the end of February. Subject to revision and review, given Martha's going to be on maternity leave permanently.
All right. Thank you.
All right, and Matt, if you would like to keep the keep the floor.
Yeah.
Takes us up to technology.
Yeah, even though we didn't meet, I'm excited to share some updates with the board. So we, just for everyone recall, we had established that. We wanted to kind of learn from our peers and and hopefully build some relationships with our peer libraries. We selected seven libraries. I have great notes. I really have to compliment Bill and Eric and certainly Bonnie. For their efforts and putting together what they learned. So I have detailed notes from six library visits at this point and the one remaining is occurring this Friday. The 18th at 1 o'clock and that will be Wakanda. And. I think Liza and I, Liza, are you coming with me on this one? Yeah, and Liza, anyway, three of us will be up there on Friday and. What we're going to do from there is take, we kind of organized it into like building and grounds. Which would incorporate the physical plant, staffing, programming, technology from a hardware standpoint and technology from a software standpoint. And again, all this is under the aegis of technology, but some of those other things kind of have tentacles elsewhere. So we were going to get our feedback from each of these.
So we were going to get our feedback from each of these libraries sort of on a, kind of on a matrix and see where, because some of these, one thing that might be part of a technology hardware might also kind of fuse into building and grounds. We want to be able to cross-reference some of the things, the individual either programs or tech or whatever they have, where it has influence on, on multiple categories, if you will. And then we also are going to come back and just be coming back with a sort of a top five that we feel are applicable to the library, the things that we really are jazzed about. We saw at some of our peers that we want to bring to the board for consideration. And then a top five kind of that were really exciting, and it may be three or maybe five number to be D. But, but that maybe don't fall within our, you know, budget or physical plant or what have you, but just more what we learned. As a footnote to this as well, I think based on the feedback and the communication, we've developed really good relationships with our partners at these other seven libraries, even to the extent where David Archer introduced me to Nate Johnson, who's the trustee, who has the tech committee at Cook Memorial and Aspen Library. So it's, you know, this, this process has been a little long in the tooth, Omicron notwithstanding. But the goal is to present our findings for, to the board at the next meeting.
That's it. Yeah, man, I agree. I love to visit libraries. You always learn something wonderful and looking around, just wandering around. It's good, sounds like you guys have a good mission ahead, so good job.
I want to also say it's great that you're not looking just at tech, that you're looking at them more holistically. I think that is going to benefit all of us.
Yeah, I kind of can't help myself, so I try, I go back and take my notes. I try to remind myself, like, we got to keep this tech oriented, but there's some really cool things to see. I mean, just anecdotally, like Cook, we went to Aspen last week or two weeks ago. It's a beautiful library. I mean, if I give you $6.5 million for 15,000 square feet, you could probably build a nice thing. What, what kind of strikes me about that, and it's something for consideration, especially in light of the strove reading room and any other projects we might undertake is, it seems like, and this is not to ding Aspen, but that a lot of the libraries are going to this like sort of multipurpose. I can take down this wall and move that wall and everything can be reformatted. But it seems very sort of almost institutional or, or, you know, generic, if you will. And, you know, so some things we're seeing and observing and what footnotes as well in terms of like, this was great. I mean, they, Cook has seven study rooms that they can reformat and, you know, 60 different ways. But at the same time, it's all like, you know, silver things that go up into the ceiling and latch in. It's, it's just not very aesthetically pleasing to me, but we'll bring that up for everyone's input.
Where is Aspen Library?
It's the, it's the
Heardin Hills.
Where'd I go? It's right off of, if you go down 60, just before, I think it's Milwaukee, it's on the south 60 there.
Just before Butterfield.
Butterfield, yeah, that's right. Yeah, excuse me.
Thank you.
There's like a Walgreens and you turn left at the Walgreens and it's back there. It's worth a visit.
Yeah. It's a, it's a nice, it's a nice branch. Okay.
Can I make one more footnote here, too? And maybe this should fall under new business, so I apologize if I'm still learning the ropes. But I had a conversation with my son's guidance counselor at the end of last week. Peer review and whatnot. And Mallory Jorgensen is at the middle school and she is a librarian there as well as part of the STEAM STEM plus art staff. And I was sharing with her some of the, because we had just been, some of the things that Aspen had to engage with the local schools. Like they have a high school area only for high school students. They don't police it, but it just kind of works out that way. That's only available when school is not in session. So after hours on the weekends, the high school kids are a place they can go. There were some things along those lines, especially with regard to STEAM, that she really got excited about. And so I said, well, if you'd be interested in, in potentially, you know, as we think about some of these technology investments or programs, you know, having input to the board. Because what she mentioned is that the middle school students only get two specials of the three they offer. I think it's health, maybe STEAM and then music or something like that. They only get two of those three each semester. So there are some kids who are really into STEAM and couldn't care less about arts, but they don't, they might not get STEAM for a semester or two in a row. So she's like, I would love to have a way to keep engaging those kids locally with STEAM programs. So these are just kind of, you know, feathers I'm keeping on my cap as we, as we compile all this.
Yeah.
That's great.
We, Eliza does a great job working with Mallory as well as Paige. Paige Saleh, who's the librarian at the elementary school. So we've got a growing amount of programs that we, that we do in coordination there. And I've had the opportunity to work together very positively on some things. So I think the, the thoughts and input on our STEAM collection as we continue to grow, that would be, would be helpful. We would definitely like to hear, you know, what the, what the kids are looking for. We've always had good luck when we can get that kind of synergy going with, with the school. You know, when we started putting together a Spanish language collection and youth services, we were able to see a lot of usage right away. And that was because, you know, we connected with Buffy Stoffer, who was the reading specialist over at this, the school, and pulled together, you know, materials that were meaningful for what she was doing and how she was working with the kids.
Perfect.
So no, good stuff. And it's good to know that Mallory is, you know, excited about the STEAM. It's certainly something that we're excited about, too. So we'll be sure to tap into that. That's good to know.
We ever developed a survey for the elementary school kids, elementary and middle? To help complement our.
You know, we did some focus groups for them as part of the last long range planning process, but I think that's the most we've done. We certainly invite, they're, they're welcome to provide responses.
True.
To the big survey, but usually they don't.
Doesn't have to be part of this project, but it's not a bad idea to just tailor something to them, even work with librarians and schools and see what just see what the kids have to say.
That's a good idea.
It is, it is. So Liza, Mallory, STEAM kits. Okay.
I didn't know that she was involved with the STEAM part of it. I guess we just get stuck on the librarian track sometimes when we're talking.
Yeah, yeah, and I certainly don't want to step on your toes. I just heard, you know, librarian, I ran with it. So yeah, it's good to know that you're already in conversations.
Yeah, and I was over there actually earlier this week. I brought over some crafts for the lunch periods and I had 70 kids engaged, so that was fantastic. But not there that day, so we didn't get a chance to shoot the breeze.
Gotcha. Well, we can hopefully, we can enable that or you can disable that anytime. Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, I think that takes us through our committee reports. And then that'll take us up to our new business items. The first of which will be the annual evaluation. So Jenny, I had sent out as part of the packet, the summary of the process and the deadlines in that process is part of what everyone received this evening. So beyond that, I turn things over to you.
Thanks, Eric. I want to say thanks so much to the committee and to Kathy for all their help. So what you've received so far, and thank you to all the chairman to have gotten all their feedback in regards to the goals. So each of the trustees that are a chair to a committee received an email about the goals that are part of Eric's review. And so everyone got back to me with their feedback on how the goal work is going, so that was wonderful. So I'm compiling all of that. And then we also sent out a survey to staff. And so I'm very grateful to everyone that's been able to get that back to me. And so we hopefully should have the staff survey wrapped up by the end of the week. And then we'll move on to the next step in the review. So that was part, that, that takes us through the first part of the review and the second part. So goals and then staff feedback.
Yeah, I want to thank the whole committee for working on this. They, I think those of us who were involved in last year's review were very grateful to Tricia Brockett for a real revision and updating it and making it something that we all could participate in. And then to turn around to a brand new committee and say, okay, here, I really don't know where that is, but if you could find it, it was a good idea sort of thing. And you guys really picked up on it beautifully and used the best of the best and added to it. So I congratulate you because I know that's not a easy thing to do, especially when we're all separated by Zoom. Easier if you're in the room and you can kind of toss out the ideas, but well done. I know last year we were really pleased with the process, Eric, I hope you were as well. And it's, it's nice to be able to get everybody involved in a positive way, so I appreciate all your help very much.
Yeah, I would second that Jenny. Your enthusiasm, jumping in and pulling everything together this year and keeping us very much right where we should be on course is been incredible and much appreciated.
Well, I we are the most on the schedule for this project than we have ever been, so thank you.
Well, I have to say, Janie has been such a big help because I've had to ask her to resend me things like numerous times. And Eric, thank you for all the documents that, like, I feel like you have so many historical documents that really helped so that we could use exactly what Tricia did last year, again this year, it made it very easy. So, and thank you to everyone that's answered my multiple questions. So, so then we'll just keep connecting with all of you as we move along to the next parts of, but thank you to everyone for your participation. It's made it very easy to get this all done, so thank you.
Good deal, okay. So then that will take us to what'll be, I think, a pretty quick, a pretty quick item, which was the one that we had added at the, at the top, which was alternatives for the holiday luncheon for staff. So Kathy, you and I had talked about wanting to still do something for staff despite the fact that the holidays have passed and the need for social distancing precluded any kind of a gathering. So I did, was finally able to catch up with folks over at Bluffington's. Talked with Derek over there and went through the options as far as making a a delicious meal available through Bluffington's, who is often our caterer for those holiday luncheons. And it sounds like the easiest way for him to way for him to do that would be if we were to get gift cards and provide those to staff. That, you know, then staff would have the money that they could then come over and, and spend. Otherwise, some, some of the other things would, the accountant would probably get a bit, sounded like it would get a bit complicated. So I'm inclined to go ahead with that, but I wanted to mention here this evening, in case anybody had any ideas as far as something else that we might do.
I think that's a great idea. I, I as does everybody, I'm looking forward to when we can get together in person again, but I think that's a, that's a really nice alternative. And we definitely want to show our appreciation.
Right, good deal. On that note, we can move on to the old business. And our item of old business, first up is the second reading of the budget. And I will share over here to our budget information so that we can have that up and peruse as so desired. There is not much that has changed between the, the version that we that we're looking at here this evening and the one that was reviewed at the, the last meeting. The, the changes that occurred. Some discussion with the foundation refined a bit the estimates for the salary for the development coordinator. And that reflects the budget in two ways, specifically miscellaneous revenue, which represents the foundation reimbursing the library for that salary. And then the staff salaries where the expense shows up. So refine those estimates a little bit and I would highlight as well, in a situation in which we become wildly successful in fundraising beyond our craziest dreams. And we decide that we need Melissa here for 30, 40 hours a week and it's way more than we had anticipated. The, the overall impact on the, the budget really would, would still be pretty minimal. We want to have a good estimate, but it's, it's not, you know, the, the same as working with a collection budgets or anything because it's the revenue coming in matching the expense on the, so it cancels each other out. The good estimates are important, but if we don't exactly nail it, then it's not going to, you know, tip the budget in any particular way. So that is the, the change that we had here versus the document that was presented in front of the board at the last meeting. At the February 10th meeting of the finance committee, the committee did vote to forward the budget to the full board with a recommendation to approve. So it is here in front of the trustees this evening with that recommendation from the finance committee that it be approved. And I will open the floor for any questions, comments that anyone might have. Not hearing any, before I open the floor to if anyone wants to make a motion. I do want to mention that the finance committee in meeting, meeting twice did have some good discussion surrounding the, the, the budget before the approval at the, the second meeting, that there was information that was pulled together regarding kind of cutting the ebooks versus regular books information in a couple of different ways. And taking a look at some of that, those numbers and information as well as discussing on the building and grounds and the way that the budget here tied in with the foundation budget. So there was definitely some good discussion that was had despite the small number of changes. If there aren't any questions, then I would look for a motion to approve the budget. Otherwise, you've still got time if you want to ask about something.
Okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the 22, 23 budget for next year.
Thank you, Bill.
Second.
Okay.
John?
Yep.
All right. It was John, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
For the second, yeah. So we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelmann.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Zaudi.
Aye.
All right, budget is approved. And Bettina has our draft numbers and I will confirm that those are approved. And they will have their final approval slash blessing in front of the village board at an upcoming meeting. So, all right, that will take us to our second item of old business, for which I will turn over the floor to Melissa Williams for our development coordinator report. Melissa?
Muted, Melissa.
Melissa will be with us for a moment. I'm sure she just got pulled away from the computer for just a second. Kathy hit on a lot of the, the items that we're working on right now in, in terms of the, the discussions with the campaign planning committee. I think the planning committee, along with the building and grounds committee, has been meeting about weekly for the last month, I would say. And very productively. So mentioned, taking a look at the, the building across the, across the street, the conversation with the friends. And that, you know, we've got some events that we're starting to work on planning for, you know, with Melissa and Jillian pulling together the information for those. So I expect that we'll continue to have a lot of exciting information to really bring for the, for the trustees and that the things will continue to get more exciting and more valuable as we get out and have more conversations and become more public with what we're working on and doing. Kathy, is there anything that, that you would add as far as any items that I'm missing? We've discussed a lot. I know. Forget anything.
We had meetings and our meetings have been, we've been busy and, you know, making progress. It's, it's, you know, this has been, this has been a slow project from the very beginning and it continues to. But it's, the steps hopefully are always in the positive way and there's a goal. So I think, I have to say, this, this recent collaboration to put together a document really worked well. Again, you know, by Zoom, it would have been so much easier to sit down together. That couldn't happen. So I'm really proud of the people I'm working with here just to get the job. It's kind of like your tech committee. I mean, this, I have to say, this, this group of trustees is, is, I'm very pleased with, I think we're very successful. We're getting the job done and everybody seems to be enjoying their roles in it. So I appreciate that very much.
Good deal. If Melissa makes it back here, then I'll let her jump in and add whatever she might have to add. In the meantime, I'll move on to the director's report here. One item that I wanted to highlight because we had an update that happened was on the three thousand dollars that Jillian Chapman, our outreach coordinator had solicited as a donation from Davy Tree Experts, which will provide the financial support for us to have a little reading slash learning garden area here at the library as well as supporting our seed garden and some gardening programs over the summer. As you may guess, our summer reading theme this year is garden themed. So that will all tie in very nicely and be very well supported with that community sponsorship. A great good thing. And we were very excited to receive the, the check from Davy Tree Experts in the mail yesterday. So that that is good and is a lot of credit to Jillian for, you know, reaching out and making that contact.
Great.
Okay, I don't really have anything else that I really particularly wanted to highlight in the, in the director's report other than to mention that with Omicron, we were down a little bit in terms of statistics. We had to move a lot of our programs online or make them asynchronous. And if we couldn't do those things, then we had to cancel them in January. But despite all of that, we were still up in terms of the circulation, not to the impressive extents that we had been through the months in the fall, but we were still up, which was good to see. So we seem to be bouncing back well in February and I think for February and March, we're headed more towards some of the more significant statistical numbers that we've been seeing in the fall in terms of twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-one versus two years ago. So continues to be good to see. We have a new staff member that joined us, Rachel Yancy, which brings, means that for the first time in a while here since we had some staff that retired or took positions elsewhere at the start of the fall, that we're back to full complement, which is good. Any questions, comments on anything in the director's report? Otherwise, I think we're up towards looking for a motion to adjourn.
I would just make one, one comment. I love looking at charts and, you know, it's kind of ties into some of the tech committee deliberations. You know, you look at our, our three year, our circulation graphs, right? Obviously, we throw out twenty-twenty, it looks like twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty-one are setting up as kind of better comps. In particular, like the July circ numbers were both, I think they were like within sixty of each other and over ten thousand. So I think as we're looking back potentially for comparative metrics, we might want to use this as a guide to sort of, and we know this, right? But this, the numbers are airing it out throughout twenty-twenty, look back to twenty-nineteen as we're looking for year over year comps. The other thing that struck me in this was that the digital circ is now as, as great as the juvenile and the adult circ. You know, give or take a few. And that line continued, the digital circ line continues to go up. So that also argues well for, you know, some of the discussions we're having. And then the other, the other takeaway I took from this, if you scroll further down, I don't know what to make of visits. I mean, I think we probably have to, you know, try to filter out some enthusiasm about just getting out in the world, maybe in, in back in July and August, September of twenty-twenty-one. But what I thought was really compelling and, and, you know, speaks well to our, our programming and services staff members is I, I look less at the number of programs, you know, quality over quantity. And the quantity of people would reflect the quality, in my opinion. Maybe that's something we can debate. But if you look at the quantity of people showing up from our programs, where was it here? This is on page. Where am I, Eric? The programming.
I don't know, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring it up.
The programming attendance, page forty-four. I mean, we had one last year that was, two last year over fifteen hundred and we've already got, we had four in twenty-twenty-one. And that's huge in my estimation and, 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 you know, bodes well for use and enthusiasm and hopefully contributions to the library. But in terms of our roles as maximizing this community asset, you know, I think the numbers kind of speak for themselves and we're getting people in the door. We're getting people the materials they, they are looking for, presumably, and the, and the program seemed to be crushing it. So I look at these and, and take away a lot of good, good feelings, a lot of good, you know, insights.
On the, on the digital numbers, I have been thinking and will probably want to discuss at some point if we might see some seasonality that really becomes apparent with those. When we get into the colder months, that, that people, you know, lean even a little bit more into a preference for those, if, you know, if, if maybe they, you know, kind of switch back and forth between physical and digital, if, you know, like, you know, it's gets into winter and the, the digital access becomes a lot better option for me. You know, I don't have to worry about getting through bad weather to, to get to a physical item. So I'd kind of like to say that we should really start digging into the statistics here for January, but unfortunately, I think, you know, as, as with everything, COVID kind of continues to muddy the water a little bit more than we would really like it to. But yeah, we're keeping, I keep it on staff is doing a great job.
I had to say one thing about digital, because I borrow a lot and in the last year, I suppose my usage is up, but the availability of books digitally has dramatically improved. I mean dramatically. I could put in a request for a book and it says twenty-six weeks and three days later I get it. I mean, it's, it's just, and I know that we're in, you know, in a group where we participate more in somebody, whatever it is, it's working to, adding to our advantage very well. It's a huge improvement and that just encourages, and I, I've talked to a lot of friends, can't find the book, the hardcover. Or they want to do in her, in her library. And I said, if we try digital and sure enough, they get it. So it's just, it's great. It's working well and it encourages more use.
Keep spreading word, Kathy, because that, that is very helpful, especially to me. People get intimidated by those hold signs and won't add themselves. Right. But as you found, the second you add yourselves, I know we have Lake Left patrons interested and I can buy a copy exclusively for our patrons.
Yeah.
So keep, keep telling them, just, just, you know, take a chance and the worst thing can happen.
And the program allows you to say, we'll tell you, we don't have this book. Would you like me to ask your library to order it? And that doesn't mean you're, you're doing it, but to give the user a little bit of say as to, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea and, and feedback. And so it's a bad part of the program as well as good. I'm, I couldn't be more pleased with it. And also the audiobooks, I mean, there are just tons of audiobooks now. It used to be if you were taking a trip, you know, you had to get, you know, Nancy Drew something, but this, now anything you want can get. So it's, it's great.
And I can't take full credit for that. There's been a publishing boom in audio over the last couple of years. But I am very grateful that our resources are being used more.
Good, good one. I'm too.
Well. I'll, I'll still chime in with some credit for you, Anna, though I know you won't take it for yourself, but Anna does a great job.
Yes.
Staying on top of those whole lists and keeping an eagle eye on things. We've been making an effort to continue to up the resources that are available for that as the community interest increases and Anna's done phenomenal work with our digital collections and digital resources.
Well, thank you.
Great.
Okay. Any other questions or notes, stats or anything else? Not hearing any, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I just have one question. Kathy, are we still going to executive session after this?
Did we want to do executive session this evening?
Um, well, that's up to Jenny. Jenny, I, I'd explained to Jenny that if we were to discuss specifics, it would, it should be in executive session. So is that a conversation?
I don't have any specifics. I just have some more process questions. So I don't know if I should just follow up with you after the meeting.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Do you want to, Eric, can she hang on for a few minutes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. That'd be great. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's nothing else. I will move to adjourn.
Thank you, Jenny. Second, John seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-six PM. Good meeting tonight, everyone, and take care.
Thank you.
Take care.